Good afternoon and welcome to the July 9, 2007, meeting of the Salina City Commission. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Jelka.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Here.
Commissioner Purney.
Here.
Commissioner Vanir.
Here.
I'd like to invite everyone to join us in the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item is a citizen's form. Time set aside for any citizen who would like to bring something to the commission's attention that is not on the day's official agenda. Is anyone who wishes to come forward? Seeing none, we'll move on. There are no awards and proclamations today, nor are there any public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, so we will continue with the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of July 2, 2007.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd move approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Motion is to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes five to zero. There's no development business today, so we will continue with items of administration.
Item 8.1, second reading ordinance number 07-10,396, amending chapter 42, article 10, division 1, sections 42-506 and 42-507 of the Salina Code pertaining to classification of functional and structural types of signs.
We passed this on first reading last week and have not received any comments since, so I will entertain a motion on second reading. Mayor, I'd move that we adopt ordinance number 07-10,396, classifying or defining the various classifications of signs. On second reading.
Second.
Motion is to approve ordinance 07-10396, amending the appropriate sections of Salina Code pertaining to the classifications of functional and structural types of signs. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Commissioner Purney.
Aye.
Commissioner Vanir.
Aye.
Mayor Jelka.
Aye.
Item 8.2, resolution number 07-6415, endorsing the new Salina Economic Development Strategic Plan.
Mr. Gage.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. In late last year, initiative began to establish a new economic development strategic plan for the Salina area. The basic intent was to answer the question, what is the plan to encourage job creation and stimulate private sector investment in the city and in the county? And so basically, the intent of the plan is to create a new strategy to, in essence, accelerate economic growth in our community, increase business activity, and provide more high-quality job opportunities for the folks that reside here. Basically, the plan incorporates various components. Those include workforce quantity and quality challenges. We know workforce is a challenge. It's a challenge nationally. Retention and expansion of existing employers, enhancement of new business attraction efforts, stimulation of retail development so that we can capture what we gain through our other opportunities, review of Salina's regulatory development climate and defined plan for city, county, urban service area, defined industrial expansion and attraction targets, planning and creating an infrastructure for growth, and a strategy for the 2010 census count. There are also some structural organizational changes included in the plan related to the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce in order to give them the capacity to implement the plan as desired. Included, it's sort of a breakdown of the total over five years, the estimated total investment over five years, combined private and public, is about three point, a little over $3.9 million over that time. And based on the functional areas, components of the plan, you can see where most of that money is intended to go. Workforce development is the highest functional component at about 48 percent of the funds, followed by existing business growth and retention, new business attraction, and then they drop off into smaller increments after that. From a fiscal perspective, the city of Salina has contributed historically for quite a few years, about $85,000 into economic development through an interlocal agreement with the chamber. $50,000 of that is for industrial development services and $35,000 is for commercial development services. In order to fully fund the plan, the estimated contribution by the city in most years would be $121,000 from 2008 through 2012. However, in 2009 and 2010, there was an additional amount that would bring that, an additional $50,000 that would bring our annual contribution in those two years to $256,000. And what this is enabled, what this is intended to do is is to help the city of Salina to be a partner in creating a matching grant, or matching opportunity for state and federal grants related to our airline service, to give us an opportunity to really, in essence, change it and create a service that we believe will increase usership a high degree and at some point, provide a break-even service. So, it's not intended to be a long-term subsidy or anything like that. It's intended to help us get through a transition time while we really strategize and change how we operate that function and make it better for everyone in the community. So, again, you would see from 2008, the annual contribution would be $206,000 total. 2009, it'd be $256,000. Be the same for 2010, and then back to $206,000 in 2011 and 2012. All in all, when we look at that number, it is somewhat significantly more than what we've paid before, paying $85,000. But if we said to ourselves, well, if we started a new economic development department within the city of Salina, how much would it cost? I can tell you it would cost quite a bit more than that when you look at all the overhead personnel, you know, any other services that you need to obtain and so forth. So, all in all, if we can accomplish the objectives of this plan, it's still a very, very reasonable amount, in our opinion. One of the things that would need to happen is if the city commission endorses the proposed plan, is staff would then need to include the 2008 estimated contribution in the annual budget. In addition, we would then commence preparing an amendment to the current agreement with the Chamber of Commerce for Economic Development Services to incorporate the service changes and the contribution changes. So, that brings to our recommendation, which is one of the following options. One is to approve the attached resolution, which does three things. Provides an endorsement to the new Salina Economic Development Strategic Plan. It directs staff to incorporate additional funding into the 2008 annual budget. And then it directs staff to prepare an amended economic development funding agreement with the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce. Certainly, the other option is not to approve that at this time and try to obtain, staff would try to obtain further direction from the city commission as to where you would like us to go. We think that if the plan meets the needs that you're looking at for the future of the community with regards to economic development, that option one would be the recommended action for you. Be happy to answer any questions, and also, we have representatives here from the Salina Chamber, Area Chamber of Commerce that may even be able to answer more detailed questions if you have those.
Questions to the staff report?
I understand that there was going to be some kind of fundraising mechanism or efforts to, for additional funds. Do we know where we are on that, or if that's still going to happen? Is there a task force that's looking into this?
Dennis Lawver with the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce can probably answer that question better than I.
Thank you, Commissioner Larson, for that question. The fundraising effort from the private sector is moving forward. We're very well organized, have kind of a finance committee that has met, been giving some guidance. Earlier today, we picked up a quarter of a million-dollar investment from one of the private sector businesses here in town, and I was tardy to your last meeting because I was doing my prep work on $75,000 contribution of our investment support from another business here in the community. So, so far, it's, we're continuing to move ahead and everybody's had a truly positive response.
Pretty aggressive.
Yes. If I may, I want to make one other comment, if I may, Mayor.
Sure.
The May edition of the League of Municipalities, Kansas Government Journal, had an article entitled "Six Truths They Do Not Teach in Economic Development Classes." And I think this plan fits hand in glove with four of those. I'm just gonna, real quick. Truth number three, attitude counts. This plan is grounded in a can-do attitude, in a can-do approach to the issues that are before the community. The statement here, any city with a positive can-do attitude toward attracting business in which is prepared to act positively can eventually attract new business. Truth number four, there is no status quo. Community can either move forward or move behind, but you're not going to stay where you're at. And if you anticipate the future, you can get ahead. Truth number five, economic development must be planned, and it must be done in a way that fiscally makes sense. And as you know, part of the plan says, for example, if the local government's going to give a financial incentive, that we need to develop a benefit-cost ratio that shows that that makes sense before you'd be asked as a commission to invest in infrastructure in the name of economic development. You need to have a legitimate way to show taxpayers this makes sense from a dollars and cents point of view. And then truth number six, keep your existing business. And as Jason pointed out, 69 cents out of every dollar in this budget goes toward either workforce development or support for existing business, and that's really a lot of what's grounded in the plan. So, with that, I just, I want to say one other thing. I want to thank nearly 40 people that were involved in the process of putting together the plan. I think Tom Bell from the Salina Journal who served as chair, the airport authority, the county and the city staff heads were very involved in this process. And again, almost 40 different people that were involved in putting together the plan, and I, just a very big thank you to the folks in the community that put that together. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I'd move we approve resolution number 07-6413, which endorses the new Salina Economic Development Strategic Plan, direct staff to incorporate additional funding into the 2008 annual budget, and direct staff to prepare an amended economic development funding agreement with the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce.
I believe that's 07-615, 6415.
Excuse me, thank you.
I'll second.
Go ahead.
I'll second.
Motion is to approve resolution 07-6415, endorsing the new Salina Economic Development Strategic Plan, incorporating additional funding for that purpose into our 2008 budget, and acting, ask directing staff to prepare the necessary agreements to do so. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes five to zero.
Item 8.3, award of contract for the 2007 subdivision improvements Magnolia Hills Estates addition, project number 07-2643.
Mr. Place.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. On May 21, the city commission approved resolution creating a benefit district for the 25 residential lots known as Magnolia Hills Estates Phase 2. On July 3, bids were received for this project and are as follows. APAC Kansas, $474,510.55. Smokey Hill, $587,957.98. Engineer's estimate was $494,042.10. 100 percent of the cost of the improvements will be assessed to the benefit district. The project has been temporarily financed through a temporary note and will be rolled into the long-term bonds of 2008. It is recommended that the city commission award contract for 2007 subdivision improvements Magnolia Hills Estates Addition Phase 2, project number 07-2643, to APAC Kansas in the amount of $474,510.55. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Place?
This is for streets, asphalt streets, is that right?
Yes.
I know there was a lot of talk about changing the specs on the asphalt and different processes we were going to use. Has that been done?
It is the new, the standard spec hasn't been changed, but the spec for this project and everyone that we're currently doing is the new mixed design.
And at some point during the project, does somebody actually test the asphalt to make sure that it meets that spec?
We require, we don't do the testing, but we require the contractor to provide us tests if we request them.
Have we, or do we?
Depends. I don't know what we've done in the past.
Well, I guess I, just in lieu of the problems we've had in the last year or so with some of our streets, it might behoove us to start asking for those.
Yes.
We could do that, Commissioner. Usually, you spend more effort on concrete with testing, but of course, traditionally, you wouldn't have as much issue with asphalt if we've had it recently either, but we can sure do that. Certainly, we'll want to make sure that the mix is as prescribed. That's one thing that's real important. And then make sure that, we can make sure that we can test that and that we're comfortable with the final product that we get.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much. I'd entertain any public comment, if there is any. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I would move that we approve project number 07-2643 and award contract to APAC Kansas incorporated in the amount of $474,510.55.
Second. Motion is to approve contract for 2007 subdivision improvements to APAC Kansas in the amount of $474,510.55. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes five to zero.
Item 8.4, first reading ordinance number 07-10,397, amending chapter 41, article 2, division 3, sections 41-62 through 41-64, 41-66, and 41-67 pertaining to water conservation.
Mr. Schreig.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you know, city staff has previously provided an overview in great detail, but one of the main points was that the city's water supply is comprised both of water well, water wells which harvest water from the groundwater supply, as well as river water which is discharged from the Canoplares Reservoir. As part of the city commission's consideration of that, and as a result of the water emergency declared in 2006, the resulting review of the city's water supply resulted in a conclusion that the city of Salina would need to adopt an ongoing philosophy of water conservation rather than just a water conservation in response to isolated incidents. And one of the outcomes of that was adoption of a water action plan, which was endorsed by you previously. Ongoing conservation efforts will allow us to become better stewards of the city's water supply and minimize unnecessary depletion of surface and groundwater supplies. And as you may recall, one of the discussion points in the previous study session was the fact that groundwater levels rise and fall very gradually, and that the recent rains, while they caused flooding this spring, have not caused the groundwater levels to return to normal at this time. As you may also recall, the city of Salina remains in a water warning through the end of the year, and components of that water warning include limiting grass watering to twice a week based on dividing the community into three zones, prohibiting watering of grass, flowers, plantings, and vegetables between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., limiting commercial and industrial landscape watering to that which is necessary to preserve vegetation required by the city's landscape ordinance, limiting filling of pools to once a week, limiting home-outdoor vehicle washing to once a week on Saturdays only, and limiting waste of water such as, but not limited to permitting water to escape down a street ditch or other surface drain, or failure to repair a controllable leak of water due to a defect in plumbing. Despite our efforts to keep the community informed, we're still noticing violations throughout the community, and staff has undertaken a review of chapter 41 in preparation for an increased enforcement effort. You've received a redline copy of the ordinance changes that have been proposed, and in summary, they are the following. Revisions to clarify the governing body's authority to declare a water warning and impose mandatory restrictions. Revisions to clarify the city manager's authority to declare a water emergency and impose mandatory restrictions subject to governing body review at the next special or regular meeting. Revisions to the violation notice requirements to provide that customers of record and any other person known to the city who is responsible for violation shall be provided either actual or mailed notice of the violation. Provisions requiring that written notice of a violation be affixed to the property have been removed. I would note that there still is required actual notice of the customer of record. Revisions to the violation notice requirements to provide that the customer of record and any other person who is responsible for violation shall be provided either actual or mailed notice and be ordered to correct, cure, or abate immediately or within such time as the city determines reasonable under the circumstances of the violation. There's a different process to cite for a violation proposed in the ordinance, basically due to the fact that watering violations are not, are something that's instantaneous. They're not necessarily something that is cured over a five-day time period such as weeds and other nuisances. And then it also removes the provisions that provide for penalties, including imprisonment not to exceed 30 days to be fixed by court, and by doing that, the recipient of a citation may have the opportunity to pay without a mandatory court appearance. I would also note that with respect to the enforcement efforts, additional part-time staff will be utilized and scheduled to provide monitoring, not necessarily on a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week basis, but certainly to cover those entire time periods throughout the enforcement effort, and that the city code currently provides a mandatory $100 penalty for the first offense and a mandatory penalty of $200 for the second and subsequent offenses. It's our hope that after initial enforcement efforts, the need for scheduling of part-time staff will be reviewed and that we'll find that we can lessen that scheduling as well as our efforts. It's our hope that water warnings will help us to accomplish our water conservation goals and result in getting the community informed of the fact that the water warning is still in effect. In the interim period, the Salina Code still provides for citation and prosecution for violations. As far as a fiscal note, the attached ordinance amendment is not anticipated to have any fiscal impact, and with respect to recommended actions, staff has identified four options for the commission's consideration. The first option would be to adopt the attached ordinance as drafted. The second option would be to amend the provisions of the ordinance as you see fit. The third option would be to provide a direction, additional direction to staff regarding amendment of the city code. And finally, your fourth option could be denial of the approved ordinance, which would result in the city's code remaining unchanged, and we would have a different mechanism to follow to cite individuals for violation of the water conservation requirements. In light of the city's water conservation goals, staff recommends adoption of the ordinance as amended and attached to your packet, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Schreig, how does this ordinance treat private wells?
Private wells are not regulated by our ordinance. Separate of this ordinance, staff has recommended for clarity and to avoid confusion that water well owners that use private water could choose to follow the restriction or the watering schedule. That would then amount to them not getting confused in terms of being turned in and us having to follow up. But, just to be clear, this does not regulate private wells.
Do we have legal authority to do that?
We've looked at that. It's my understanding the city of Hays was able to obtain authority to regulate private wells through the formation of what you read about a few months ago called an Iguca. They had to form an Iguca, which is an intensive groundwater use, I can't think of a city.
Control area.
Control area. It was a very legalistic and sort of difficult means. One thing we're looking at is the Kansas, the Board for the Kansas Water Office is looking at a new water plan, and in that draft language, they do provide the discretion for municipalities to regulate private water wells to a degree. I'm not, Martha maybe could answer the question better than I, but I'm not sure that's been approved just yet, but it's definitely close, if not approved. We want to see where that goes. That might actually clear the path if we choose to do that. Now, at this point, if we would choose to regulate private wells, we would probably limit that regulation to simply complying with restrictions that would be in place, and that, so that the use of private well water which comes out of the same groundwater source would be consistent with everyone else in the community. That's probably how we look at it.
It's not my sense there's a huge problem in that regard, but I have had a number of citizens bring that up to me.
Yeah, and it's difficult to tell. You know, you can drive around and see a few folks that are watering that you know have private wells. I can't tell the number. We do know there are probably at least 2,000, if not upwards of, say, 3,000 private wells in our community. So, all in all, the use of private well water is still a fairly significant impact to the overall groundwater use, but again, it's difficult to tell how many water on, just on any day versus on the city-prescribed days.
From a procedural standpoint, we have received the list that the state has of the private wells. It's not necessarily all-inclusive, but it does identify the wells that have been permitted through them. So, one of the steps in our process is to verify before we send any type of warning or violation notice, either through that list or by observing it in person, whether it's a private well or using city water.
And that was my question. We don't have, it's not documented anywhere in the city, who has a well and who doesn't? You get this list from the state?
We have the information that the state provided, and then through last year's enforcement efforts as well as this year's, we've been adding to that database as we had received a phone call or a report. We'll go out and verify, and if we find that it is a private well, then we'll add it to the database.
And there are certain areas in Salina where it's pretty obvious that they're not going to have a well. You can just kind of, and I understand that there's certain areas that the table is so far down that it would almost be impractical for them to have a well.
Yeah, that may be. I'm not, Martha could probably speak to that more than I, but yeah, I'm sure that there are areas in town that private wells are more difficult to get to water.
At the point that we make contact with someone through that first notice of warning, one of the things we encourage them to do is contact us if they have a private well, so we're able to verify and we don't proceed with a second notice in terms of a violation.
And this is going to be a notice sent in the mail?
Yes.
Not, not in their water bill? How many people don't read those?
We would send it through the water bill.
Right.
As far as a notice of violation, we would never send that through the water bill.
Okay. It will be a totally separate.
Yes.
Eye-catching notice.
Yes. The ordinance actually provides either actual notice or mailed notice, so it could be delivered in person or it could be mailed.
Okay.
And Commissioners, I do want to emphasize, the newspaper sort of covered it as well earlier, but I want to emphasize that we know we're still going through a transition stage for a couple of reasons. One, this is the second summer where we've addressed restrictions, although this summer, there's a perspective that, well, the rivers are full, so what's the big deal? And we must not be under restrictions because the rivers are full. And what we've, what we're telling folks is that, yeah, the rivers are full and that's a great thing, but our water system is still designed to treat so much water from underground, so much water from the rivers. And the second thing is, is that even though the rivers can fluctuate quickly, we all know the underground water takes a long time, and you're not in a position to restore your groundwater table during a drought. You're in a position to restore it when you have more water, so we want to take a long-term approach, and that's the reason that we have the restriction. And at some point, as we get further down the line, the water scheduling may be something that actually goes into our regular watering protocol here and isn't necessarily part of a restriction anymore. But we're going to continue to look at that as we go along.
I guess that's my concern is, I mean, once the water warning is off, it's back to basically a free-for-all, right?
Yeah, we will, we'll look at that before it would expire at the end of the year and decide whether we, I think by the end of the year, my hope is, is that we will actually have an ordinance and a determination as to whether or not twice a week or whatever that schedule would be is something we want to continue to do. There's a lot of speculation as to what's best. We know watering every day is not a good idea. It's not good for the root system of grass. Twice a week really helps balance our water system, and the determination to stay with that for this year was based on numerous discussions that our Water Utilities Director has had with various landscape folks in the community, and it felt that that's a balanced effort from the perspective of growing grass as well, with the exception of new grass, which we do provide special exceptions for certain situations. But whether we stay with the twice a week or whether we modify, we do know that we probably will not recommend going back to the so-called free-for-all method of watering from this point forward if we're going to continue to emphasize conserving our groundwater. Just doesn't make sense to do that.
I think from a standpoint with the community, at some point, I know right here it talks about we're needing to adopt an ongoing philosophy of water conservation rather than this conservation in response to isolated incidences, incidents. I guess my thought is, at some point, we're going to have to do something besides calling it a water warning, or, you know, I think it's got to be an adoption for long-term.
And if I may get some clarification, I've had some citizens ask me, the two-day is just for grass? Can you water vegetable gardens and flower beds any day, every day except between those hours?
You can handwater any of the landscaping, anything like that, vegetable gardens, flower gardens, as long as you are within the proper timeframe. You can't water between, I believe, 10:00 in the morning and 6:00 of an evening. As long as you're in the morning or of an evening, you can water those by hand, and the, yeah, the twice a week is simply for grass.
Grass.
And again, we have special exceptions for new lawns and some of those things. All they need to do is contact our Utilities Department, and we'll work with them.
And one more thing. On some of these new development, some of these housing development areas and some of these new commercial buildings, are they landscaping differently according to, I mean, do they have 2020 foresight to where they're realizing that they've got a landscape now according to our water restrictions?
We don't have landscape regulations that deal with the residential. I'm not sure, I might look at Mike a little bit. I'm not sure we're seeing any, a difference at this point.
Now, the planning commission's had some discussion about ziriscaping more on the commercial side, and the only thing I'm aware of is we have worked with them in terms of planning to get, so that they aren't planting in the heat of the summer and they can plant in the off-season, but I'm not aware of anything.
The new housing development areas, there is nothing to tell them, the new homeowners, how to, what kind of grass to plant?
Well, no, and we provide various educational material. We haven't gone as far as to say you have to plant a certain grass yet. We haven't gone that far. Whether we will may depend on whether you direct us to and what, or further research. The problem is, is whether you go north or south or east or west, we're in a transitional area. There's not a perfect grass for Salina, Kansas. Obviously, if you go with the cool water grasses, that doesn't, or cool weather grasses, it doesn't make a lot of sense. You can go with the warmer weather grasses, and it depends on who you talk to, whether that makes sense or not, and you also deal with disease and bugs and weeds and other things, depending on the grass and how it grows. And so water is one aspect, but in the end, chemicals and other things could be another aspect we look at. So we'll continue to look at that to see if we think it makes sense to prescribe a type of grass. Certainly, there are going to be other actions that we have for you guys to consider as we go forward. One of those is going to be water conservation rates, and that will help people to kind of make a decision possibly when they plant a new lawn as to what type of lawn they might want to provide. So, and there may be some other things that come out of it, but we will still continue to look at the grass blends and see if we can come up with something that makes sense, but we're not ready to prescribe anything just yet.
Any additional questions? There being none, I'd invite any public comment if there is any.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Robert Bossdater. I have quite a bit of experience with both commercial property and pools and water usage in town. I've tried to make myself somewhat familiar with our water system here. It is my definite belief that we're working at the wrong end of this water conservation problem. I'm 100% in favor of water conservation, but by far, the biggest waste of water in town is the fact that we throw three to three and a half million gallons a day back in the river. We take water out of the river that is filthy and clean it and run it through our system and run it through a state-of-the-art system at the end, and we put absolutely clean water to three and a half million gallons a day every day of the year back in the river. We ought to be taking that water through the existing pipe that is available right back to the water inlet, re-treating it, and continuing to circulate it through our town. It's just absolutely ridiculous to throw three and a half million gallons a day away. If we're concerned about people watering their lawns, why are we not concerned about what the city is doing? And that, you know, there's a big article in the paper this morning about the city pool losing 40,000 gallons a day. Well, that's one one-hundredth of what we are losing going out of the sewage treatment plant. We need to take a hard, hard look at that. We ought to be asking our water department to say, okay, what is that last little bit of treatment that is necessary to make the effluent that's going back into the river be usable through recirculating it?
Thank you.
Just to add to that, Commissioners, we agree totally on that, and when we, Martha has qualification, or statement, or requests for qualifications for folks to look at what we've referred that we're going to need as a raw water master plan to study the various options we have, and reclamation of our wastewater in some form or fashion will be a major component of that. So we're right in line with that thinking. We do agree with that completely. Real quick note, too, the mentioning of the pool kind of reminded me of something. There's been a lot of attention to that, and certainly it's a waste just because water's gone, but from the perspective of our groundwater, it actually is going into the groundwater supply and it's not evaporating. So while it's not the preferred method of recharging our groundwater supply, the actual impact from a groundwater perspective really isn't there, but in any pool, you're going to waste through evaporation, just whatever your surface area is. But as far as what's going through the cracks, we'd rather not spend the energy to treat that and put it in the pool, but it does go back into the groundwater, so it's not creating a big impact from that perspective, but it needs fixed.
What is, what is a timeline? I mean, if we're looking at a master water plan, I mean, how soon could we have answers for that kind of question?
Looking right at me, so. [laughing]. Currently, we hope to have a firm selected before the end of the year and a contract negotiated and all of the work complete by the end of next year. Some components we may prioritize and move forward a little quicker, but that's the direction we're headed at this time.
This will be pretty comprehensive. We'll look at all kinds of options, and it's going to be fairly pricey, but we need to really, for the long-term, look at all these options and say, where do we put our resources? Into what aspect of raw water, whether it be, you know, more wells or rights or reclamation or recharging the groundwater supply, whatever else is out there, what makes sense for us.
And from a preliminary standpoint, does it seem like we have the infrastructure?
As far as the wastewater plant effluent reuse, we have a 12-inch pipe that was installed under the Smoky Hill River, but it's just virtually under the river. It isn't connected to the wastewater treatment plant or connected to any piping facilities within the city.
Okay.
And I might go back to the Kansas Water Office and their initiative on their water conservation plan. They're working closely with the Division of Water Resources and the Kansas League of Municipalities to work up the language that would allow cities the authority to have restrictions toward private wells. So there is some work being done on that, but it doesn't have the final stamp of approval at this time.
Thank you. If you could give us your name and address.
Commissioners, my name's Dan Audi. I'm owner of Professional Sprinkler Installation in Salina, Kansas, down on Third Street, 146 South Third. One question that came up here, and I was going to talk on some other things, but one question that came up when you were reading the ordinance and stuff like that, some of the language said any other parties involved, and that may be construed as putting the irrigation industry in harm's way. If we've got clientele that are requesting one thing that is against what the city ordinance is stating and stuff like that, you know, I just wanted to get a little clarification on that. As far as other matters, I happen to be one of the various landscape contractors that was in some of the meetings during the initial consulting stages of what was going on. Some of the things that came out of those meetings, including the current schedule, were not things that were recommended by the vast majority of the landscaping contractors, master gardeners, and the people that were at the actual meeting and stuff like that. I won't delve into all of the, all the things that have, that were, that were going on with those meetings because they were quite extensive. A couple of four-hour sessions in the afternoon was what involved down at the water treatment plant. But I will say that some of the most advanced irrigation tools that we have to offer as an industry are currently illegal by current city statute. So that's something that needs to be taken into consideration. I know that the city has a couple of test plots using smart controllers with the ET systems available, but those are not available to the general public or the commercial industries which could utilize them the best. They're in very small, isolated areas, only controlled by the city at this point. So that's something that needs to be taken into consideration when you're dealing with the amendments to the ordinance also.
Thank you.
Commissioners, quick clarification on the reference in your ordinance, Section 41-67, under violations, disconnections, and penalties. Subsection B, as I think what he's referring to, says, "Prior to disconnection of water service, a customer of record and any other person known to the city who is responsible for the violation or its correction shall be provided with either actual or mailed notice of the violation." That's intended to address the owner of the property if the person residing there is not the owner. It's not intended to address any other party. Probably would be a stretch without some real direct relationship to that, without the, I can refer this to the city attorney, but I'm going to make an assumption that anyone working on behalf of the owners, probably under the owner or the residence responsibility, unless there's something that's done that's in conflict with that, I can't fathom that this would cover them. But I don't know, Greg, if you have any thoughts on that? Certainly isn't our intent to do that.
The, we can certainly look at that question and the language between first and second reading, if I may. Jared Johnson is here, one of the other lawyers in our office that assisted with the work on the revisions to the ordinance, and before I speak without consulting with him, I will certainly make note of the question and look at whether or not any language changes would clarify that any further. If I may, I might ask, if that was the language that was of concern?
How's that?
Was the language that we just referred to, or that the city manager just referred to the language that you were concerned about?
He said it a couple times in there, so essentially.
Okay.
Commissioner, I'll refer to Martha if I get this incorrect. I'm not aware that we have a regulation that would not allow the use of some of those other tools, and if we do, Martha can correct me, but I know one issue that does come into play is if you have a smart system that basically responds based on the weather, you may not feel that you can select your two days like we select the two days. So certainly, there could be an issue as far as conflicting with the scheduled days of watering and what a smart, when a smart system would tell you to water, but other than that, I'm not aware of any restrictions, and I'll let Martha address that a little further.
I think that's, that's exactly what Dan's speaking to. It's going to water when it needs to as opposed to when we might tell it to on our two special days. And our purpose behind the three areas that we're testing is to get an idea whether there's really that 20, 30, or 40% savings on water that the manufacturers recommend. This is going to be a tough year to test that out because virtually May and June had lots and lots of water, which is a way different situation than last year when we intended to compare it to, so this year's going to be a little different. But we definitely hope that those systems pan out so we can include that in future regulations.
If not, we'll bring it back to the Commission. Mayor, I would move we adopt ordinance number 07-10397, amending Chapter 41, Article 2, Division 3 of the Salina Code regarding water conservation by clarifying water warnings and water emergencies, amending provisions related to required notice of violation, and amending penalties for violation of water restrictions. Second. Motion is to approve ordinance 07-10397, amending sections of Salina Code that pertain to water conservation. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes five to zero. Not aware of any other business, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We are adjourned.
One quick question on this.